Okay, got it. Good, that's all right.
All right. I call the meeting of Town Council Southwest Ranches to order if we can please call the roll.
Yes, Mayor. Mayor Bright Cruz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky.
Here.
Councilmember Al Britton.
Present.
Councilmember Hartman. Councilmember Kaczynski.
Present.
Make a motion to excuse Councilman Hartman.
Second.
Awesome. Any comments on that? I think we're good. All right, if you can please call the roll.
Councilmember Al Britton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kaczynski.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky.
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Awesome. Please join me in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Barbara Sharif was going to have a presentation, but she's unable to join us this evening, so we will go right to item number four. Angel Gomez.
Good afternoon.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having me. My name is Angel. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Staff, Commissioner, Town, what is it called?
Town Councilmember.
Town Councilman, my apologies. Great to be here in Southwest Ranches. I come with information about, from the Broward County Public Schools, in regards to the referendum that's coming up on August 23rd during the primary elections. I want to start by saying that I'm here just to bring information. The only thing that I'm allowed to do is to educate, but never ever advocate in regards to the referendum, and definitely not agitate. We don't want anyone agitated over all this. All I bring is information so you can share with the members of the community. So, it starts, the best way to explain this is that it starts a few years back in 2018, when the Broward County Public Schools went ahead and, after the MSD tragedy, went out for a referendum for a half a mil. And in that referendum, at that time, voters chose to invest in public education, so they went ahead and passed that referendum. And the intended allocation for that referendum from the beginning was to supplement the salaries of teachers, to also hire and retain about 500 security personnel, including SROs, for the schools, and to also hire and retain about 100 mental health professionals to work with our students and the staff in the schools. So, the referendum passed. Here we are now in year three, and legislatively, referendums only last for four years. So, the referendum that was passed in 2018, it's about to expire on June 30th of 2023. So, we're in year three. We're ending year three right now. So, the school board is asking once again to put out another referendum, but it's pretty much the same thing. Same intended allocations, same purpose. At this point, it's pretty much to retain all the, you know, all the supplemental pay that has been given to the teachers, the safety and security personnel, and the mental health professionals. The only difference is that the referendum that they're asking for is for, instead of a half a mil, is 1.0 mil, right? So, it's double. So, let's talk a little bit about that, because it's not necessarily a number that just came out of nowhere, but we're having, the district is having challenges staying competitive against the northern district and the southern district of schools. A year or two after we passed over half a mil referendum, they passed a one mil referendum for the same intention. And that's okay. So, we're having a very difficult time recruiting and retaining, especially retaining at this time, a lot of the teachers that, you know, great educators in the classroom. We're not able to compete with our neighbors, because they're able to offer not a higher salary, I just want to make sure that we all understand that, the salary is the salary, but instead a higher supplemental pay. So, if you're familiar with teachers and their paycheck, they have their salary, and now they have also supplemental pay, and together, they make the total of that paycheck. So, that supplemental pay is more like a bonus, right? So, like an extra pay. We do not determine how that money goes to the teachers. Yearly, the Broward Teachers Union decides how they're going to spread that money around, but you have teachers right now, among the 16,000, 17,000 teachers in Broward, you have about, you have teachers that are making about $2,000 a year to $9,000 a year in their paycheck, based on certain criteria, that is up to, up to the BTU to decide how they do it. In the absence of that referendum, the teachers will immediately see, starting July 1st of 2023, a decrease in their paycheck, not in their salary, because obviously, without the funding source, there is no supplemental pay. Aside from that, there's new legislation out there that has been shared, and that is actually coming into effect this year. It actually says that any money that is, that is collected from a referendum by a school district, has to be shared with charter schools at the rate of 20%, okay? So, regardless of where you are on the charter school dilemma, right, what I usually follow that statement with is with some data, so people understand who we are in Broward, right? So, I usually go like this, I say, out of five kids in the school district, one actually goes to charter school. So, it happens to be 20%. I'm not sure that Tallahassee used us as the measuring stick, but it happens to be a coincidence, that's what it is. So, this time around, the referendum comes up, and voters will have again the opportunity to decide if they want to do that or not. To make it a little more tangible, and a little more understanding, is what does that mean in the pockets of you and I? So, I am a homeowner like everybody else, right across the canal over here in Davie, and for, so I went to Marty Keer, the property appraiser, and I said, hey Marty, how much is a, an average, what is the average market value for a home in Broward? You know, I thought he was going to say $4 million, right? But obviously, it's not true. Believe it or not, the average market value for this past year is $390,000. That's the number that is used to begin how it is that we levy that referendum. It is not the 390 that is used, but after exemptions and other things, the criteria, the school base, the school board taxable value, that's what it's called, the school board taxable value, is 274 for the average homeowner in Broward. So, that means that they will actually contribute and invest $274 a year, which is, at this moment, an extra $11.50 a month. They already are investing $11.50, because we already have the half a, the half a mil. But when, if the one mil passes, then it doubles to $23. And for our condo owner, it goes from $6.50 a month to $13. The reason why I say this to you is so you have an idea. I cannot tell you how to go on this and how to share this information. You can. You can tell people either way. You know, go for it or forget about it, right? I'm not allowed to do that. All I'm able to do is provide you with information as it appears and is true, so you can share and guide others with the real facts, and let them make a decision, okay? And I'll also mention those numbers, not to make light of them. We have to be very cautious now in the economy that we're in. $11.50 for a homeowner, and $6.50 for a condo owner, it's real money. It's not necessarily just change that they happen to find in their car. The way prices are, and the economy, and gas, and, I mean, we can just talk forever about this. This is real money, so we don't want to make any light of that. Instead, we want to, or our goal is to let people understand that we value that investment, and that it's not just peanuts. It's actually something that is accomplishing a lot. It's the power of the group, not just the power of individuals. I'll end with this, too, because there's a lot of also other conversations about, you know, buckets of money in the district, and the history that exists in regards to handling money and all this stuff. And I get it. I'm right there with you. But this money that we're talking about with the referendum is a different pocket. It's a different bucket of money. This money is money that comes from you and I, homeowners, from people. It comes from people in their pocket, to people in the schools directly. Those who work with the little people in the schools. So, they work with our students. This cannot be used to separate the money and paint a school, build an extra classroom, buy buses, no. This is people money. This is money that the community is, is voting if they choose to do it, so it goes to that intended allocation. And when it comes to the supplemental pay this time around, the supplemental pay will go to every employee that works school-based, every employee that has hands-on students, right? So, from the bus driver, when they bring them in the morning, to the teacher that receives them there, to the custodial staff, the cafeteria ladies or gentlemen who feed them, and also security and the administration. I am not school-based. I work downtown, so Angel does not benefit from the referendum, right? My former wife and my future wife are both teachers. I'm in between teachers right now, I'm between wives. So, my former and future wife will benefit from the referendum, but I, I won't. It has to be those who are in the schools, okay? So, I share that. I will also follow this up, of course, with your county clerk and everybody, so you can have the information needed to access. And in the event that you ever have two people that are talking about the referendum, and you want someone to give them a little further education on it, just call me. I'm right there. You've got more than one person with you, I'm right down the street. I love to come over. My favorite is Dunkin' Donuts. I'm not a Starbucks guy, so I'll meet you at Dunkin', and we'll talk about it. I'm happy to do that. I'm not just being silly. I'm one of your neighbors, okay? And now, I would love to take questions from anyone, any of you, so I can answer, because your questions are questions that your residents also have. Thank you.
Yeah, I do have a question. It seems to me, correct me, I may be remembering this wrong, but it seems to me that the first time this went through, that half mil, that there was a portion of it that went towards technology and repairing the schools. Is that correct?
No. That's, it is not, but it's a great question, because that is a very common mistake that we all make. You're talking about the SMART bond. So, the SMART bond is the general obligation bond that passed years back for $800 million, one of three, and it was used to do that. You know, SMART, the T at the end was technology. Each one of those letters represented something that it was being addressed by that. This referendum is not a bond.
Okay.
This is just money straight to the pockets of the people.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you for asking that. That's a common.
Anybody else have any questions?
You asked my question.
Okay.
I was going to ask, I was going to ask about the $800 million bond, where that was.
Awesome.
No?
All right. I think we're good. Thank you, Angel, for coming by.
Thank you very much, and thank you for allowing me to, give me this, this time to share. I appreciate all of you. Have a great day.
Awesome. Thank you. You, too. Take care. All right. Public comment. Do we have any public comment this evening? I think we do. Hey, Debbie.
Hi. Debbie Green, 199th Avenue. In looking at the way my immediate neighborhood looks right now, and just keeping in mind, as you move along with these projects, and I know that the grass that's put down, it is because it's more durable, and it lasts through the season when there's not much rain. But if you go down our neighborhood, whether it's that grass, or the grass that people put in their own, they all look very nice. However, the, I forget what it's called, the grass that the town put down.
The behia.
The behia. It now looks like when I run down through my streets or walk, it looks like I'm running down a rural highway, not like a rural street. So, the grass is anywhere between mid-thigh, I mean, from my mid-calf to my mid-thigh, where those long pieces of the grass with the, I don't know if those are seeds, whatever it is. So, whether, some people are just not maintaining it. Others, they're maintaining their yards, but the behia grass grows so much faster than the other, so people who actually have people come out to do it, maybe they have them come out twice a month, it, it just, it looks really messy. Like I said, it looks like we're on a rural highway as opposed to a rural street. So, it's just something to keep in mind as you're moving forward.
Good.
But just so you know, the people who put in the other grass, their grass looks very nice, so it seemed to have lasted through the dry season.
Good.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Seeing no other public comment. Public comment is closed. All right. Any board reports this evening? Seeing none. Councilmember comments?
I'll go.
Okay.
Got to be quick around here.
Yeah.
Couple of things, just to bring, for, how many, how many people are in YouTube land? Two. Okay, good. All right. So, we got two in the audience and two in YouTube.
We're good. We're in balance.
Yeah, batting a thousand. Just to make everybody aware, we have a photo contest going on right now for the new, the 10th Annual Photo Contest for the calendar. The theme is fun in the ranches, and what makes Southwest Ranches unique to you, favorite animals, recreation, gardens, flowers, sunset, town events. The pictures need to be submitted no later than September 5th, and the information is on the town website. And also, too, the Rural Arts Board is interested to know, we're working on a town flag project, and they would like to hear input from everybody, and that's, there's a YouTube special on that that you can watch about town flags, and it's actually quite humorous. I've watched it.
It is, yeah.
And I think that link is also on the town website, so if anybody wants to look at that. So, I just want to announce, I announced this last month, and I'll announce it again. I'm going away next week, and the 40-acre property that's so controversial, been controversial amongst homeowners and everything, I'm willing to meet with the property owner of whoever ends up with that property, and it's under contract, if they so desire, when I get back in. So, just making a general statement on that. Hazmat at the barn is on July 9th, from 8:00 to 2:00, with prescription drug drop-off and shredding. The Parks Foundation had bingo two weeks ago, and it was a big success. Everybody had a lot of fun, and they didn't make a lot of money, but everybody had a lot of fun. Everybody got together. Now, they made, they made some money, but it was, but it was a real, you know, we've been starred for social activities, and everybody got together, and it was, it was kind, it was kind of nice. Scholarships are going to be awarded soon, I believe, next, July 14th. Thank you very much. July 4th, it's a Monday, Town Hall here is closed. We have the Flowmobile on the 27th of July. Thank you. I knew that. And we have the Broward County Property Appraiser is going to be here on the 21st of July. No, kidding aside, the Flowmobile will be here, you need to call Deborah to make an appointment, and it's really a worthwhile thing, because it really cuts down, you don't have to go downtown, you don't have to go anywhere on that. Just a nice announcement from some of the stuff that's coming up. We got the permit kiosk in. It's in the lobby, if anybody wants to see it. It's in bubble wrap. It's going to be unveiled soon and made operational rather quick. And I was talking to Russell about our, the capabilities of it, and it does a lot more than we thought it did. And so, we're going to be listing all of that in upcoming newsletters and stuff like that, so that'll be really good. And the last thing I want to talk about, and this is something I want the council to think about very much. It's nothing we got to do today. I would like to entertain this in July, and it deals with code and proactive code. And I would like to seriously think about the noise ordinance being proactive. We seem to be turning into Airbnb party central around here, and people are reluctant to make that phone call, to call 911, or to call code, or to call whatever is going on, because of all these house parties that are going on with people out of town and something like that. And I think if we make it proactive, that might help the situation. So, just think about it, and I'll bring it back up when we have a full council.
Good.
And that's all I have today, Mayor.
Awesome. Very good. Thank you, Gary.
Mr. Mayor, I'll jump in.
All right.
I'll be very brief. I have three things real quick. Thank you, residents and those on YouTube for watching. The Safety and Traffic Committee that met, that was formed to deal with the problems in town that the residents are talking about, they made five recommendations to the council last meeting, and thanks to Vice Mayor Jablonsky, the town was able to find money for those projects, for those five recommendations. And I understand that some of those recommendations will take effect Monday, that the town's actually got the money implemented, and some of those will be put into place Monday. I'm absolutely thrilled that that took place. A lot of it deals with the traffic, so I thank the town very much, and I thank Councilmember Jablonsky for that. The, I've been working for the past, I'm going to say, four years, five years or so, to get the canal between 164th and 166 cleaned up. Recently went around Saturday and Sunday, three weeks ago, got the neighbors on 166, 164th to sign a form saying it was okay for the South Broward Drainage District to come in on their property and do the cleanup behind the houses. I had turned in a number of forms back in November of last year, but come to find out those forms didn't have phone numbers, and they are going to contact the neighbors to tell them when they're coming and set up a time for them to do that. So, hopefully, that canal will get cleaned up pretty soon, and, you know, Green Meadows, fortunately, is one of the first areas that in the next year or two will have all the drainage work finished in the area. So, with the canal cleaned and the drainage, I think Green Meadows will be in good shape as far as when it rains. And last, working on starting our civic association back. We were into our third meeting coming up the last Monday of this month. We started with nine people on Zoom, went to 14 the second. This time, I sent out 50 invitations. The people that signed the forms to have the canal cleaned also put their emails down, so the invitation went out. Thanks to Russell for showing me how to put a group together, so I didn't have to do them one at a time, which really made a big difference. But this Monday night, if you're interested, contact me, I'll send you the Zoom link, and you'll see, we're trying to get the civic association back together. So, once we have enough people interested, and once the group is large enough, we can have a president, vice president, and secretary. I'll turn that information into Keith. The paperwork's already in Tallahassee, just have to pay a fee and we'll get it started. So, maybe we'll be able to join Country Estates, Roland Oaks, and Sunshine Ranches, and have our association back. So, that's what I'm looking forward to. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Jim. I think that's super important, get that organization up and running again. Appreciate all your work on that.
Thank you.
David?
Thank you. David Kaczynski, District 4. Couple items that I want to talk about. First of all, I'm still maintaining in contact with Mayor Peggy Brown over in Weston about the Bonaventure Bridge. She's still, still keeping pressure on him, so we can make sure that happens with the dedicated eustrian passage across that bridge. Waste Pro is a very dirty word around this town hall. I had a neighbor who left his bulk and his garbage out, and mind you, it's been over a week, and it was, we get picked up on every other Monday, and it was the past Monday. When I walked my dogs, his stuff was out there, and they didn't get to picking it up until today. And it took a lot of phone calls, a lot of pressure from Town Hall. I think Town Hall has been very responsive. It's Waste Pro that is not responsive. And this morning, when I was leaving, I drove past my neighbor's home, and yeah, they picked it up, but they left a mess in the street. There was a beer bottle in the street, and some things on the side. I just stopped in the middle of the street, picked it up, and just threw it in the garbage. I was like, we're cleaning up after the waste people, so. Today was the solid waste pickup for Sunshine Ranches. Missed it. Mine's still out there. Appaloosa's still out there. Chris Brownlow's thoroughbred's still out there, so it's everywhere. It is, it is bad. So, just let our neighbors know that we're still on it, and we're working hard. Town Hall's working on it, doing the best we can. We can't fire them, because then we don't have anybody, so. I had a neighbor ask me about, I know that, yes, go ahead.
David, I apologize for interrupting. I just, just to kind of maybe finish your story, though, because there is a little bit of a silver lining there, right? Because we know that at the end of September, Waste Pro is gone, okay? Their contract ends. We are, we are in the process of reviewing the bids from a number of other vendors that have submitted bids, and so, we feel good that we're going to get a good, a good opportunity there. We're shooting to have them start on October 1st, so there is a light at the end of the tunnel, and I just, I just wanted to throw that out there, that this will not go on forever.
You be the bearer of good news.
I just, I just wanted to finish the story.
All right. Let's see, I had, you know, we've had a lot of rain. We had a big storm not too long ago, and I had a neighbor bring up the fact that, you know, with the rising waters, that maybe we can explore the drainage in Sunshine Ranches. I know we got some pumps going on out west that maybe, there's a pump that may be necessary based upon the drainage in Sunshine Ranches. So, it's something I would like explored. Let's see. Elections. You know, we had elections. We have candidate, it's going to be an election this fall. I think it was maybe last year, the year before, I brought up the issue that I would like to do some changes to the election sign ordinance, and I think this is something that the council needs to, you know, put in your input on it. But my basic theories are that if it's an occupied home, they can put a sign out there without a form, because, I mean, maybe there's a reason for the form, but I look at it, you know, if you don't like the sign in front of your home, you just throw it away. The vacant properties is where I would like to require a form. Vacant properties, because, you know, a lot of these people live out of town. They don't know what's going on in their property, and I think that that is kind of really important.
David, if I could interrupt.
Go ahead.
I'm in the middle of the election. I'm dealing with the forms, and I don't want to say they're a nightmare, but I think it's a bit much. I agree with your assessment on the vacancies. I would really like to not have to, you know, do that, where it would only apply to a vacant land, you know, because somebody who's there, they don't want your sign there, it's gone, and usually people, we ask permission, you know, to put a, put a sign out, you know? So, I'd really like to see us modify that, like post haste.
Right. I definitely am on board as well. I, you know, that was when we went through the last election, you know, we, we experienced it firsthand. It is, you're right. It's a nightmare, and it's, and it's, I won't go into it. You're right on target.
Thank you.
The only thing I would say to add on to that is another, another area of abuse for that is homes that are up for sale.
Sure.
And the people have moved out, and I would, I would treat them as vacant property, too.
Yeah, that would, very similar.
I didn't brace that, yeah.
And they're not there, yeah. And they're not ours.
And then the other issue is, and our ordinance limits the signs going out 60 days before. I would like that broadened, whatever regular elections allow signs to be out, because I don't see, if you have county commissioners, judges, we should have, let the town know who's running in our town.
Well, the big thing with that, too, is also, is I think they have primaries, and so they have an election before the election, and I think that has something to do with the timeline.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm with you 100% on the first, the second one, you know.
No, no, it makes, it makes sense what he's saying, but I think the 60-day is fine.
But we don't have the primaries.
Yeah, we don't have a primary. That's what I'm saying. So, I think the, I think the 60-day fits.
Me, too.
You know.
I would just like to have a couple of signs in my yard right now.
I got a truckload. I'll give you one.
I just don't want to get a code violation. All right. Let's see. I had a text come from a neighbor that lives over on Mustang, and she said, David, you know, I was driving along Shotgun Road, and right around, I guess it's 20th Street, there's, the guardrails are actually painted green of there's, the guardrails are actually painted green, a very eye-pleasing green. And it's being shown up here. And I drove past her, and if you're out in that area, if you're out and about, take a drive by. And I know that it's just a discussion item. I'd like to see what the cost would be to do something like this in the town and the cost of maintaining it. Just because you drive and see all these guardrails, these bright, industrial-looking guardrails, and I know it, they're very important. But if we can somehow make them a little more eye-pleasing, it would look really nice for our neighborhood. I think we're a better community. And that's the only reason I was kind of thinking about this. If you take a look at it and see what comes up in your thoughts on doing that.
Where's that taken?
Shotgun Road.
Oh, on Shotgun.
As you come across the, this Mount Trashmore.
Yeah, yeah.
And take a look out there. And I spoke with Russell about it, and he says, you're right, it's very pleasing to the eye, the way they did. And Russell had indicated to me that that was actually HOA implemented the painting of these guardrails.
So they're not, they don't come from the manufacturer that way, that they were painted? Well, after being put in place?
They were painted.
Okay.
And we would probably have to make sure that they're maintained so there's no bubbles coming up over the years or something like that. But it's really a nice look. That kind of does it for me. I got one of the Waste Program. Yes, I'm done. Thank you.
Before you start, Mayor?
Yeah.
How can we implement this sign thing? We just tell Russell that?
Yeah.
Do we need a motion?
I don't think we need a motion, right? But we just give direction that we'd like to have this come--
The direction alone would be fine. And what we would do is work with the town attorney's office to craft an ordinance to amend our code, to provide for those provisions that you're looking for.
Perfect.
And I've already been in discussion with Keith, and he brought that to my attention. So that's something that we're working on. So with the input that I took notes on now, we'll make sure to incorporate that.
Good. So, yeah, I think, you know, sooner it'd be better than later, that's for sure.
Of course, sure.
I mean, it should be fairly straightforward, so.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Good job, Dave. Thanks. Sorry, Mayor.
All right. I don't have too much because I was out of town. But I did want to, Gary, thank you for running the meeting a couple of weeks ago. Appreciate that. And just everybody's indulgence, I came back and my email box was full. And so, you know, I wrote a bunch of those email returns. Sorry that this is two weeks late, but, so if you got one of those emails, I do apologize. But I did leave my work laptop at the house because we were on a cruise ship for a couple of weeks. And frankly, it was devoted to family. So, but I appreciate everybody's indulgence while I was out. I do have a question, though, actually, that I thought of while I was in Ireland, one of the places we visited. Years ago, and Gary, I'm looking kind of at your direction because you remember these things. Yeah, the sister city that we once had.
Yeah, and there's a plaque somewhere.
Yeah, and I was wondering, I'd be curious to dig that up. I thought about it while I was, what is it, Deborah? Oh, okay. Yeah, I'd like to dig that up and see what's happening.
Down the hall.
There. I thought of it while we were kind of walking through Ireland, and I thought, it's around here somewhere, but--
Yeah, it is. It is in Ireland. We can bring that back to you at the next meeting.
Good.
If you want to establish relationships with them again, we can--
Yeah, well, we can, I want to do a little research first, but yeah, but possibly.
I think it will require a trip by administration.
Illegal.
And you need somebody to carry your bags, right? Because they're very heavy.
All right, awesome. The only other thing I wanted to touch on, and I don't want this to be a big deal, but I did watch the last council meeting that I missed. And there was one item on there that, you know, went away that I was not comfortable with. And so obviously not being here, I'm not able, I was not able to express my side and the reasons why I had concerns with the way it went the way it did. And so I just wanted to take a couple of minutes this evening to talk about it and kind of express my side so that it's out there. Obviously, this item is done. It's voted on. The ship has sailed, so I'm not here to argue about it or anything. But I do feel like I need to explain my viewpoint on it, so I'm going to do that. This item I'm talking about is the charter item that has to do with filling a vacancy. And the way the item came to the council prior to the last meeting was that there was a process involved. And frankly, it's up to the council to select the replacement for that vacancy, an unexpected vacancy. And so the proposal was that the council had 90 days to do that. And if they did not do that, then frankly, they would be penalized by losing their salary until that was done. Rather a harsh penalty, I know, but that was the purpose of it. And I thought it was interesting because I listened to the conversation here and from that meeting, and it became very clear to me that it was a very, that it was probably a really good penalty because of the comments that I heard on how distasteful it was to the council as they discussed it. And I said, that's the point. That was exactly the point. And so I was pleased to hear how incredibly distasteful it was to the council. And I don't think we would ever get to that. I think we would make the selection because that is indeed the point. But it goes beyond that. And to me, you know, there was some discussion about, I want to get into it. But to me, you know, we're adults up here. We've got a job to do, and not doing it is not an option. And that, where I come from, where I've grown up, if you've got a job to do it and you don't do it, if you've got a job to do and you don't do it, then it's perfectly reasonable not to get paid. Right? You get paid for the job you do. You don't get paid for the job you don't do. So I thought it was actually a perfectly reasonable result, consequence for not doing the job that we're supposed to be doing up here. But it actually goes beyond that. Because if it does not happen, then it goes out to a special election where not only does the council continue to get paid, but the residents have to pay another $18,000 to $20,000 to have an election done because the council didn't do their job. Is that right? I don't think that's right. I think that's way out of line. And then, but it gets worse than even that. That's not the worst of it. Then the worst of it is that it really puts all the business of the town on hold for an extended period of time. We're talking about 120 days to start with. Then we're talking about however long it takes to set up a special election, which can't be done in 30 or 45 or 60 days, like I heard on the discussion there, because you've got to have time for qualification. You've got to have time to get the word out. You've got to have time for campaigning. You've got to have time for the people to have, make the proper selection. So that's at least, at least, I'm thinking at least another 120 days, minimum. And so you're talking about well over half a year for this process to go on where the business of the town stops. And that's in a best-case scenario. It could be, could happen where it would last a lot longer than that. And then the ultimate thing that is bad about the way this works out is that this is going to generate an incredible, if this were to occur, it would generate potentially an incredible amount of momentum behind saying, you know what, this 5-0 is just not working. And that ultimately is what preserves and protects our town. And so I think there's way too many dangers with what was passed at the last council meeting. I'll tell you this, I'm not opening up a PAC to fight this. I am not going to be out there campaigning against it. But I will tell you this, that I am definitely voting against it. I think it's a very bad charter amendment, and I hope it fails. I don't know if it will or not, but I personally hope it fails and we take another shot at it because I don't think it's the right answer.
Can I interject?
Sure.
Just, and I know you're not--
I'm not here to argue about it, but--
I get it. Some of the rationale behind that. You presented a worst-case scenario. After the meeting, I thought of an even more worse, if that could be possible, scenario. What if we lost more than one council member? Then what do you do? You know, what if, you know, at one time there were four of us on one plane? You know, or we travel in groups a lot of times to functions. What if several of us are incapacitated for several months in a car accident? Something to that effect, where you only have one or two council members available? You know, something like that.
Well, if that were the case, if you can't make a selection, then obviously you've got to go out to a special election, but--
Well, that's what I was trying to--
Well, yeah, and that's what we would do. But that's not really what we were talking about here. We're talking about if one is not there.
Yeah, but it would apply to multiple.
If you can't do it-- I'm just saying, Gary, if you can't do it, you can't do it, right?
Yeah, but I was looking at the worst-case potential. It could happen, you know, we're talking about something that's five, 10 years out.
And I'm talking about something that's more reasonable, that has happened twice in the history of our town and will probably happen again somewhere along the line. And that's why I think this is, you know, once again, I'm not here to debate it.
I'm just explaining to you the rationale behind it.
But I think, I think actually, I think actually when it comes right down to it, personally, looking at past history and what it's taken, I'll be honest with you, I think it's going to put the town on hold, their business on hold, for close to a year. And that's going to really hurt our town. It's going to really hurt our town.
The only thing, the only business that would be on hold would be quasi-durious.
Which is the most critical, and we get a bunch of them. It's not like something that happens once in a long distance. We get a bunch of them.
Oh, okay.
Right? So anyway, it's water under the bridge. The ship has sailed. I'm all about ship analogies at the moment, so. And I do appreciate the debate. I know it wasn't an easy debate. I know that you all have the best interests of the town at heart. You know, no hard feelings, certainly. But I did feel like I needed to express my thoughts because obviously not being there, I wasn't able to express them at the time. So that concludes my comments. All right. Legal comments?
No legal comments tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. How's Keith doing?
He's doing great. He sends me constant updates and photos, and I'm living vicariously through--
Awesome, awesome. Yeah, we were both in England, I guess, at the same time.
Oh, nice, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so that was interesting. We didn't, we didn't, we didn't meet. I didn't see him. But, all right, okay, administrative comments?
Just a couple of brief comments, Mayor. First of all, if there's any cellphones on the dais close to an open mic that could be contributing to some of the interference that we're having tonight, so hopefully you can just either turn off the mic or keep the cellphones away from them. Andy is still away, as we know, enjoying his vacation, well-earned vacation. He's also sending us pictures and bragging about how great the weather is up there, so he's doing fine. Just wanted to quickly update you on a few things. Gary already talked about the kiosk, so we'll leave that alone. But I invite you to actually take a look at it. We did pull the wrapping off of it this afternoon, late this afternoon. And we have a few items that we can show you on the capability of it when you get some time. Did want to talk briefly on the, a couple of other projects that we're working on that are kind of in the preliminary stages. So our voice-over IP phone system that we're working on with 8x8 that you guys recently approved. We've just completed one of the initial milestones, so we're looking to port over all of our numbers, telephone numbers. And Crown Castle was on-site today to do a site survey, so we're excited about getting the fiber installation at town hall. So we're working on that as well. And our LPR project, we continue to work on that. We actually have a second location installed, so I don't know if you know about that, but there is an LPR camera here at town hall already, so we're tracking those as well. And we're working with the county on their revocable license agreement to put those LPR cameras on county right-of-way. We're still working through that process. And we're also working with FPNL to have the pole placements done. So we're making progress. Last project that I wanted to update you on is our town website. Looks like we'll be going live with that July 5th, which is the day after our holiday. So look forward to showing you that as well when it's live.
Awesome.
That's all I have for tonight.
Great. Great updates. Thank you, Russell. All right, item number 10.
Yes, Mayor. This is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, repealing Resolution 2021-009 and consenting to a new agreement with the City of Cooper City, providing water services to 5950 Assad Court, 13590 Sterling Road, 5950 Assad Court Drive, and 5900 Assad Way, four single-family homes lying within the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, providing that no further expansion of service shall be permitted without the explicit written consent of the town, providing for a certified copy of this resolution to be furnished to the City of Cooper City and providing for an effective date.
Great. Do I have a motion on this item?
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, is there any public discussion on this item?
Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. Can someone explain to me--
Put the mic.
Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. Can someone explain to me why this is happening and how do we keep it from happening in the future or whatever? Thank you.
Thank you, Noel.
Mayor, I can address that if you'd like.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Russell.
You're welcome. So as you recall, we did approve a water services agreement with Assad back in November of 2020, pursuant to the resolution that's identified here. And at the time, basically, the water meter installation that was scheduled for that site was one and a half inch and required now because of the amount, the size of the building that's there and also the other buildings that are on-site that are being built into. And also, the lines that were extended to that property have also had requests for other people to possibly tap into it. So in order to keep the water pressure stable, they're looking to upsize the line, the meter. So that's why it's going from one and a half inches to two inches.
Right, so this is not a new, this particular one is not a new line. It's just an expand, an increase in the volume.
An upsize of the meter, correct?
Yeah. All right. Seeing no other public comment, public comment closed. Everything, please call the roll.
Councilmember Albretton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Item number 11, please.
This is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, repealing Resolution 2022-041 and approving a new agreement consenting to the City of Cooper City, providing water services to 5101 South Flamingo Road, real property lying within the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, providing that no further expansion of service shall be permitted without the explicit written consent of the town, providing for a certified copy of this resolution to be furnished to the City of Cooper City and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve?
Second.
A motion and a second on this item. Is there any council discussion on this item? Seeing none. I do want to make a comment related to this. And it's kind of along the lines of what Noel just spoke of. This is happening more and more. And I think there's a few items that, I think, I think this is an item that needs some research and should come to the council as a discussion item. And, because there's a few things going on, I think. And I think that we shouldn't just let this happen, per se. I'm not saying we should not let it happen, but I'm saying we should not just let it occur of its own, you know, its own momentum. I think we should have a discussion on what's going on and what should be the town's strategy for approaching this and dealing with this. You know, there's a few things going on. Obviously, there is some newer homes that would like to have, you know, hooked up to water and sewer, municipal water and sewer. There are issues about the cost of that. Well, so issue one is, you know, is this the direction we want to go? Issue two is the cost associated with doing this. What is the proper way to allocate that cost? There's a lot of different ways it can be looked at. I'm not set on any particular one right now, but I don't think it makes sense, I think I just lost my mic, but I don't think it makes sense to-- I don't know what's going on with the mic.
I didn't kick anything.
Okay. Is that better? Yeah, it sounds a little better. But I, so I don't think it, no, it's still not, it's still not happening here. Hold on a second. Let me just try this. Is that better? Yeah, let's try this one. So, I don't think that, no. I think it's something central. It's something central. Maybe, maybe there's, we don't want to discuss this item. Maybe that's the issue, you know? But I think that, that we should come up with a strategy and a way and approach so that it's fair in all the different areas that, where this occurs, that we have a central answer, that everybody knows the rules, they know what's allowed, they know what's not allowed, they know what the costs are going to be, and they know how we're going to approach this. I do think that, and this may be unpopular to say because frankly, I would prefer to leave it just the way it is, but I do think that over time, we're going to be forced for, you know, for bigger reasons than Southwest Ranches, we're going to be forced to go this direction. And rather than putting our heads in the sand and kind of ignoring it, I think we should come up with a strategy. It's a big deal, and there's a lot to it. And I don't want to rush into it, and I want it to be well-thought-out. I want to get a lot of public comment about it. And, but I think it is a discussion item that we should start researching and bring forward.
Mr. Mayor, if I can follow up with that. I've learned over, since sitting up here, that there's been a lot of the public wells that are further east that have actually been closed because of saltwater intrusion. That's something that we need to be cognizant of. So, just throwing it out there as another option, that maybe we can get some federal money.
Yeah, and I think that's, you know, that's part of it. I think as the water level does rise, I think we're going to see more and more septic systems start to fail. And, you know, so we, you know, Tallahassee is, is, they've tried more than once to try and just frankly, just outlaw septic systems in the state of Florida. It's been kicked back a couple of times, but it keeps coming back. You know, that, that could be huge to our town. I'm not looking for any sort of a change immediately, but I'm just saying that ignoring it, I don't think is going to be.
Right.
A winning strategy for us, so.
Mr. Mayor, a quick question. Does this, what this particular residence is asking for, is this a cost to the town?
No.
This is a burden strictly from them, correct?
It's a burden on them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, in the future, I know that the Barrie County League of Cities and all are pushing to get rid of septic tanks, I know. That's a major push from them right now, all over the county. Right now, I believe we're exempt from that, and I believe that somehow they give us an exemption from hooking up to city water if it was within 500 foot of a neighbor.
Correct.
Right. And that's where a cost would come into us if that were to be. But if that were to be, would we have anything to stop it? I mean, we would have to build our own plant, our own sewer plant, our own, I mean.
No, I don't even think that's an option, Jim. I don't even think that's an option. You know, there are, there are water permits that allow you to take water out of the ground, and those are pretty much done. You know, around us, you know, Cooper City is running, they have that facility, and they are just about used up their full capacity for how much they can do. Sunrise has a ton left. I don't know about Pembroke Pines, but, but it, well, I'm just going to leave it that I don't know about Pembroke Pines because there's, it depends. It depends. The answer for Pembroke Pines is it depends. And so, like I said, I'm not looking for any change, but I think that, that part of our, you know, we talk about having our strategic plan in the future, this needs to be part of it, and we need to start figuring it out. Yeah, Russell?
David mentioned saltwater intrusion. It's coming, and like you said, the wells and everything else will fail soon. You know, and I say soon, 2034, they say.
Yeah, it's not right around the corner.
No, but.
I don't want to, I don't want to create any panic. There's not, there's nothing imminent, but it, you can't ignore it either.
Right. But, but this here doesn't actually cost the town anything for this resident here.
No, no. No, this is just providing permission.
Okay.
Yeah, Russell?
Just, just a side item, not on this particular item, but just in your discussion. I think that maybe you might be eavesdropping into my office because we had a conversation yesterday, Rod and I specifically about this issue.
Really?
And about preserving service area and then things of that nature. We've had recent discussions with Cooper City and with Sunrise about future needs of the area, and Rod and I were discussing this very issue just yesterday. So.
Good.
Something that we're on, something that we're thinking about strategically, as you mentioned, and it definitely needs to be part of our strategic plan. So, we'll certainly put it on an agenda item.
Good.
For a future agenda, and we need to start, we agree, start developing some ideas.
Awesome, awesome, great, thank you. Not really directly relates to this item, but it is, you know, similar, so. All right, any public comment on this item? I suspect, Noel, you have some public comment on this item.
Noel Hollingsworth. Says it's on. Yeah, Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. Noel Hollingsworth, 100, there we go, 199th Avenue. You said why, but you didn't say how you're going to alleviate this in the future. You started to hit on parts of it. You've got a two-inch water line coming that services only this compound, and it's literally a compound. But what about the houses that are between the Sunrise water, I mean Cooper City water, and them that are also next to that line? By having only a two-inch line, the next person that hooks up can't do it. So, you need to design when that line comes off the main line. If the other 10 homes that are possibly on that line, coming past it, want to hook up, you're going to have to dig up that line and put a bigger line in. And then the next house comes, and you're going to have to put even bigger line in. Before you know it, you've got a six-inch line in there, and you've gone up in half-inch increments 10 times. You have to set up that, the line coming from the main junction down to where the compound is going to be or the home is going to be. So, the other residents, if they so desire, can hook up to it and we not have the place torn up all the time along that road. And some of these, you know, I'm going to go back 70 years. My father put in a line from North Miami Water at 135th Street to our home in, can I continue? On 149th Northeast. He put in a two, a 24-inch main all the way to our house. When the developments took place with all of those houses that were 75 foot apart, all the way up to our house, because he sold off the property, he got a check every time that someone hooked up. And it wasn't until 1965 that he got the last check that paid for it. So, that is the person who puts the line in, then has a ability to collect people hooking up to it. And that is what needs to be done. It's going to be a major expense for these people to hook up from the main line of Cooper City to them, new line. And then they, other people can hook into it as they so desire, and you need to set the rules up. We don't want it dug up every time someone else wants to put in. And if the next guy down, say, next, further down. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Noel.
Mayor, can I just?
Yeah, and let me just see, is there any other public comment on this item? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Yeah, Russell?
All right, just to clarify, and your comments are actually on the one that we just approved. So, that two-inch is a service line that is just going to address the Assad compound or the Assad property, I should say. So, the main that's there, the main, the Cooper City main that's there is sized appropriately. We believe it's sized appropriately. It's not two inches. The two-inch line is just a service line that just goes to that property. So, the main, if there was going to be someone else that wanted to tap in off of that main, they would have a service line that would approach, that would address their particular property. So, the main that's bringing the water there is sized appropriately, it's not going to have to be dug up. It's the service line just specifically for that property.
Okay, great. Thank you, thank you. And actually, Noel, the other piece is exactly what I'm, what I'm talking about, is that that type of an arrangement of, you know, who's paying for the line originally and then how that's going to get repaid, that's the strategy that I think, one of, one of the strategies that I think we need to talk about. So, you're, you're on target. All right. Any other council comment on this item? All right, please call the roll, Debra.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Item number 12 is the approval of the minutes from April 12th.
Motion to approve?
No, that's incorrect. It's May 12th.
Okay.
May 12th.
There's an amended, there's an amended.
Okay.
So, it's May 12th.
All right, so May 12th. Is there a, any corrections or updates to that? Seeing none. Is there any public updates, corrections to it? Seeing none. Debra, if you can please call the roll.
Sure. Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Minutes passed.
Motion to approve, Mayor.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, also.
All right, thank you all for coming out. Have a great evening.
Thank you.